We will call the board the regular, regularly scheduled Saline Area Schools Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, November 12th, 2013. I invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome all our students this evening. I think mostly from AP Government. You can tell it's a trimester, so welcome. And at this point, members of the public may address the board for up to three minutes. Are there any members of the audience who wish to address the board this evening? Superintendent Grayden.
All right, just a couple of quick announcements. One, yesterday marked 50th day of the school year and then kicked off 50 celebrations across the elementary school. So that was part of the curriculum. I also was able to go and visit a couple of the schools and some of the celebrations and watch the students get engaged. Kind of it's really part of the county curriculum, but I'd also like to know Brad Bezu was an outstanding DJ over at Pleasantville yesterday. Also had the opportunity last Friday to visit Ms. Coghlan and Ms. Smith's room at Heritage School on the Take a Veteran to the School Day, and she's done that program for several years. And had the opportunity to have a World War II D-Day veteran present with the students and the student or the soldier was actually able to share with them his diary that he kept during the war. They're very powerful for the students. It was great. That was on Friday in the lead, and I know several of our buildings did activities yesterday related to Veterans Day. So a great opportunity, and I applaud Mrs. Smith and Ms. Coghlan for putting that together. We continued our work with local law enforcement this morning with ALIS training related to the implementation. ALIS stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. And really signals us a fundamental shift in how we go about protecting students in the case of an active shooter and really starting to look at different methodology and really different mindset associated with that. So we're doing that in partnership with the local law enforcement. It's similar strategy that's been applied across the county. And it did today for our training, did involve blanks being fired in the school building and informing the students, but it was, it certainly raised the level of adrenaline as we really went through simulated activity associated with really a dire situation. So I applaud the administrative staff for our dialogue associated with making sure we, whatever we can, to keep our students and staff safe. And last week, we did have a career day at the middle school for the first time in a long time. I'd like to thank Kim Bryant, Stephen Lodge, and David Raft, who really spearheaded that and got that off the ground. Great feedback from the presenters who came in and talked, good feedback from the staff, and actually good feedback from middle school students associated with that, including particularly the FBI agent who came and talked about his job. So again, I applaud putting that together and starting to identify at the middle school level possible career paths so that our students have, you know, some understanding that they can really think about their future beyond Saline High School. So that's all I have.
Okay. I would like to mention that the board will meet in closed session this evening for the purposes of Superintendent Grayden's quarterly review. The board will take no action after the closed session. Any comments from board members? Those stuck down here, Karen?
I just had a couple of quick things. I was at the foundation meeting this morning, and they were voting on grants that were going to be distributed this year and upwards of $20,000 going to our teachers. So thank you to the foundation for that. And also, everybody save the date, please, for February 8th. Snow blast will be happening at Travis Point. Not the kids, unfortunately. This is a grown-up event. But tickets will start going on sale January 10th, so keep that in mind.
Anything else from this end of the table? Okay. Squier, Jay, Dan, Diane.
I attended a meeting Sunday night that is an anti-bullying forum and that meets every other Sunday or every second Sunday of the month. It won't be meeting in December, but anyway, that's very helpful, and I think there are a lot of talented, helpful people who are reaching out. So I'm hoping if anybody's interested in pursuing a discussion around that, this would be a good forum for you to do it.
Okay. Raphael?
Yes, I actually, I want to briefly touch base about an opportunity myself and six other students had, I believe it was two weeks ago, where we had an opportunity to discuss the average like high school life for a student with President Holden and Superintendent Grayden. It was an open dialogue where Mr. Grayden had, you know, a series of questions, and it provided an opportunity for us to really, you know, reflect our opinions to Mr. Grayden and Mr. Holden and, you know, share our perspective. Also want to talk about last Friday, we took that same concept and we brought it to a bigger group, Stride Members, and we also allowed, we didn't allow, excuse me, we, we had special members and also at the diversity council, we had Saline High School come and join the same discussion. It was a great chance to have an open dialogue about problems that people or students face at the high school. So it was a, it was a great opportunity for everyone.
I want to thank you for taking the leadership role and putting those two sessions together. I know personally I got value from it, and I think moving forward, certainly feel free to put other groups together like that. And I think maybe we'll have other, other board members attend as well. It's certainly good to hear from the student and their perspective on things and will kind of help guide us as a governing body as we move forward.
Do, I'm sorry, do we have some recommendations and outcomes to come to the board from the dialogues?
The parking rates are today?
Not budget items. I mean, we're all, I mean, they had the discussion. I mean, I'd be interested to see, you know, if they're willing to share, you know.
Several things that were discussed, one, that students had trouble with was at the middle school level when it comes to changing the curriculum level from the middle school like specific science courses to the high school level. They struggled in that and just, just transferred from like an eighth grade science course to maybe the freshman science course. It doesn't matter if you're in Earth and Space or Biology. They struggled in that, and they also had problems with like the team system where they said maybe kind of divided the grade more than they would like. Those are two things I really took from it. And we also, I spoke with Mr. Grayden and Mr. Holden about this specifically, about preparing people for like real life when it comes from the high school to, you know, eventually, you know, where you ever, where you go from there. And one, I think we learned like how do you define real life from, you know, after high school and from there where we as a school and as a district can do to prepare you for real life. So those are all big things that we, students that want to talk about.
I just have two quick items. I'd like to thank the community and the voters of the community for renewing the non-homestead millage, which was up for renewal on November the 5th. It passed with close to 80% of the vote. I think that demonstrates that the Saline community values education, and we're certainly pleased by that result, and will continue as a board to do the best we can to provide the best education possible for our young people. The second thing is I did attend last Thursday the Bright Lights presentation, which Joel Benedek was, was part of, kind of let it up from the staff level. There were folks from the U of M Depression Center that came in. I think the takeaway that I got from that is that it was pretty well-attended. I would say that there was probably close to 50 parents there. So I think that, that kind of indicates that there is an issue out there with adolescent and high school depression issues. I think parents are looking for more information, and I think moving forward as a district, we want to be there as a support system for the parents and try to assist those students who need that help. Nobody should have to struggle with depression. There's help out there, and certainly we have resources at the district level that can assist in that area. With that, the chair will enter. Go ahead, sure.
And I think a couple others were there. We went to the Mike Price Trail dedication. That was right at the, just after the last meeting, so it seems like a long time ago, but, and it was still warm then. But that was a very nice dedication. The trail is definitely looking good, and it's going to be a definite increase in the value of our investment.
With that, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed. So move. Todd, support, and the chief. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. We have two scheduled reports tonight. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Grayden.
All right, I'd like to invite the members of the Saline Alive program to come on up over by the light pole, and I'd also like to invite Bob Donaldson from SETSEG. SETSEG is our property and casualty insurance provider and also the sponsor of the, along with M A S B, the Education Excellence Award. It's a great opportunity. We attended a function last, last year where we received the award, and now is an opportunity for us to literally to get the sign.
Yeah, it's good. And I don't know if you, Smida or.
Yeah, well, just on behalf of all of Saline Alive, we want to thank SETSEG for recognizing our efforts with Saline Alive. Certainly, we're accepting the award, but this wouldn't have happened without some key people, Frank and Lisa Johnson, Wendy Beardsley, and Dawn Martin were really the laser focus and the impetus to make this kind of focus on community mental health happen. So thank you, SETSEG, for recognizing us at the state. Smida, do you want to?
Sure, I think this was 2008 when Lisa and Frank met with Scott Grayden, and he approved this initiative to bring awareness to mental health in our schools. Certainly, at that time, it came out of a personal tragedy, but then we went on to not only focus on issues of suicide, but also the factors that contribute, such as depression, stress, bullying, and the forums that you just heard about today, came about the Bright Nights as well as the Anti-Bullying Forum, and good partnership with Stride has really come about as a result of all of our efforts over the past five years. And partnership with the schools and the school personnel has been critical in that as well. So I appreciate all of that support, and thank you so much for recognizing that.
One of only 27 winners statewide, so a job very, very well done, and I congratulate all of you.
All right, next I'd like to invite the Special Olympics group up, Mr. Musson, along with the folks from Special Olympics.
Fisher Musson accepted this award recently at an event at Saline High School on our behalf. I would like to have it kind of re-presented tonight, and again, it really highlights an opportunity to show the partnership that Saline Area Schools has had with the Special Olympics, really for a long period of time, but it certainly kind of went to it to a new level last year in an opportunity, an event called the Polar Plunge. And so one of the great things about the Polar Plunge is that administrative team all did it. I think it's a once-in-a-lifetime thing, and so I think.
Board of Education.
Board of Education's going to have to carry the mantle this year for the program. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Musson and the folks from Special Olympics, including Ms. Florence.
Hi, I'm Jackie Flores, the Director of Washtenaw County Special Olympics, and we came here this evening to present this plaque to Saline Area Public Schools in honor of our appreciation and your dedication to Special Olympics in Washtenaw County. Like Scott said, we appreciate all your support, and the administration was great in the Polar Plunge and helping us to raise, I think you were one of the top group money raisers in the whole Polar Plunge. So that was wonderful for our, our organization, Washtenaw County, and all that money came back to us here in Washtenaw County, so that was nice. And I just want to thank the staff and the administration and all the students also. I've seen a lot of students here. They help us in the schools, I know, with their connect classes and help us with some of our events, so we really, really appreciate that help. And Julie Kearney's on our management team, and Jenny Sparrow, and Devon's one of our athletes, and he also did the Polar Plunge, so, so we're really appreciative of you, and we want to present this plaque to Saline Area Schools.
I appreciate that. We look forward to continuing to support our special education athletes, and we're going to continue, and we're looking forward to the plunge again. Are we jumping in again? Yes, we are. Maybe we'll get some board members to jump with us this time. What do you think about that? Thank you, Jackie. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
We have three action items on the agenda tonight. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the 2012-2013 audit report as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Warner. So move. Chief.
Second.
And Diane. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, excuse me. We're going to talk about it first. Throwing the hat here.
Ed has a good report.
Actually, we have Jeff Dalway and Andrea Link here from Plant Moran, and they will give a little presentation on the board report.
Thank you, Janice. Good evening, everybody. It's good to be back. It's nice also to see that you have a very strong accounting program with all these students behind us interested in this audit, so it's a good thing for the profession. The plan tonight will be to, similar to prior years, is take a look at three items that you have in front of you. We have a financial statement report, we have a federal program audit report, then we have a letter to the board. The plan will be to cover, outcover those in summary format, and then Andrea will have a PowerPoint presentation where she'll take you through the details of the general fund, look at some of the key components of the general fund, as well as some of the historical activity that's taken place. You know, it looks like it was a pretty busy year and that there were some significant decisions made throughout the year, particularly related to some of the contracts and whatnot, and we've got a slide that'll show really the effects of that and get into some of the details as far as if those weren't done, this would be the outcome, we'd be in a much different place today than where we are right now. So with that, the first package that I have is the financial statements. It's about a 50-page document. Overall, there's really no substantial changes in any accounting policies. There's been no significant changes in accounting pronouncements that have come out that would impact the current year's statements. And so the statements are really very comparable to prior years. There's really no new details within the footnotes of any substance. So overall, I'm happy to report that we're issuing an unqualified opinion. That means that we're rendering the highest level of assurance that we're allowed to render on your financial statements. It's a clean audit, and it means that your finances are, they've been prepared in accordance with governmental accounting standards. The second audit report we have is your federal program audit. So if you receive over a half million dollars of federal aid, you're required to have those programs tested. The district in 2013 received about a million nine in a variety of federal programs. We tested your child nutrition program as well as your special education program, and the tests that we run and throughout this audit is more in compliance. And so you get, you get money to spend on certain activities within those programs, and they have to follow the criteria of those programs. And so we've run a variety of tests related to that. And I'm also pleased to report that we're issuing an unqualified opinion related to this audit. We found no instances of non-compliance or that we have any issues related to questionable costs, so a clean audit there as well. And then we have a, about a 15-page letter to the board. This letter really summarizes the audit, and then we have some informational items in the back, last eight or nine pages or so. It's really a popery of information related to some of the things happening within the state, the finances, some changes that are taking place within, let's say, Mepsers, and some just other items related to some of the federal programs. The first couple pages summarize the audit. What I mean by that is if we had any issues related to, let's say, disagreements with the administration, if we had any significant accounting estimates where we had to do special work, we'd note it in here. If we had any kind of internal control issues, we'd put that in here as well. We do have a spot in here where we talk about a couple journal entries that were made as a result of the audit. We did have a couple, I'd say they were non-recurring items where we assisted the district with getting these on the books. One related to your bond refunding. So you refunded $97 million of outstanding debt, so there, it's not a, it's not the easiest transaction to record, so we assisted Janice with getting that. Essentially, what we did is we grossed up the, let's say, the income statement. So we're reflecting the $97 million coming in, recording the cost of the bond issuance, and then showing the money going out to the escrow agent. We also did have one adjustment in the general fund related to something new this year related to some Medicaid funding that came through the ISD. So there's some reimbursement of expenses. So the expenses were incurred in 2013, and we adjusted the books to get the revenue back into 2013 to match, there's a matching principle here of matching the expenses with the revenue. Throughout the audit, just so you know, we do go through your key transaction cycles. So we're looking at cash receipts, cash disbursements, payroll, wire transfers, bank reconciliations, and we do look at a number of documents, and what we do is we gain an understanding of those internal controls surrounding those transaction cycles, and then we take a transaction that we randomly select, and then we walk it through the system to make sure that the system is working with the, with the district's documented controls. And so I am pleased to report that in those tests that we ran on your recurring daily operational items, we didn't have any issues related to that. So with that, I will hand it over to Andrea. She's got PowerPoint slide here. She'll take you through the details of the numbers of the district.
So this will be an overview of the general fund, which is the main fund of the district. This first slide shows the impact of some of the restructuring the district has done over the past couple of years and the impact that came in in the current year. So you have a one-time sale of land that gave you about half a million of revenue, and then cost savings from utilities, healthcare, and contract concessions. Those last two items are people costs, so it's always hard for the district to make cost-cutting decisions regarding people costs, but those two together, we have about $2 million, which is your ending fund balance at the end of the year. So without making those cuts, you would be at either a zero or negative fund balance. This is a balance sheet of the district at the end of the year. As you can see, your assets are mainly cash and are receivable for those state aid payments that came in over the summer. Your liabilities are accrued payroll for the teacher salaries, as well as a state aid anticipation note, which is borrowings against those state aid payments. That amount increased from last year due to cash flow needs of the district. Also looking at this slide, the bottom line is the fund equity year-over-year, and you can see that that number increased from last year due to those cost savings measures. This slide shows a comparison of your revenue from year to year. So you can see at the top, there was a 1.7% increase in total revenues. A majority of that was due to that sale of land, that one-time $500,000. So taking that out, your revenue actually remained relatively flat year-over-year. You may remember some of those federal one-time programs that were in place. They came in place and kind of trailed off the last couple of years. There was stabilization, EDU-GODs, other recovery act money. This is the first year that they were running those programs included in revenue. Also with the state revenue, that remained relatively flat. There was split increases due to some new programs this year. One of them being the Mepsers stabilization, so the district got money in, but it went right back out to retirement. This slide shows your expenditures year-over-year. So we talked about those cuts in the people count. Clearly, that's the biggest percentage of your total expenditures, but it's worth noting that these graphs look relatively consistent year-over-year. So even though there were cuts in the people, the salary, and benefits, the district was cognizant to make cuts in other areas as well, so your percentages of total expenses remain consistent year-over-year. This lists at your instructional expenses as a percentage of total operating expenses, and it compares Saline to other districts in the area. Among these, Saline would be about in the middle for people count. You can see it's a bit higher in the instructional percentage, which means for each dollar spent by the district, more of it's going directly into the classroom. This is a history of the profit and loss of the district. After reductions in fund balance for the past three years, that trend was turned around this year, and we saw an increase in fund balance due to those cost savings measures. So as we mentioned previously, without those items in place, we would have been in a zero fund balance or deficit position. And this shows the impact of the profit and loss on the fund balance. The board has adopted a policy to have a fund balance as a percentage of expenditures of at least 5%. You can see we're currently at 4, so heading in the right direction, but still need to keep an eye on those expenditures to get up to that 5% forward policy. Also, that line above the graph is the state average fund balance, so you can see Saline is still a bit below that state average.
And then lastly, one thing that we hadn't done in the past related to student activity funds, just wanted to touch base on this. So we're not obligated to audit the student activity funds. The student activity funds are not assets of the district, although the district does oversee and the accounting for it. There's about a million dollars in assets in a variety of the different funds. What we did, what we did do this year is we did take a look at the policies in place that oversee the funds and basically report back to what our findings are. And we did find that the district was proactive, it did put together a reference manual for various advisors of those funds. In within that reference manual, it includes a variety of good information related to, you know, here's how you're supposed to receive cash, here's the types of documents you need to have in place before you cut a check, here's the types of folks that should be cutting checks, here's how quickly you should be depositing cash into the bank when you get it. Talked about the use of purchase orders, talked about that you shouldn't have personal reimbursements being made, talked about some of the things you're not supposed to buy with these funds, like alcohol, tobacco, things of that nature. And then also talked about doing a random audit each year, and we then did, let's take a look at some of the documentation related to the audits that were done. So Janice had some information related to the back and forth that she had with a couple of the funds, requesting information, advising back to the advisors, and then essentially kind of doing a wrap-up of the audit. So basically what we're doing here is reporting back to that you do have a good book in place for the folks that are in charge of these funds, how to account for things, and then also seeing that the district is being proactive and actually doing a lot of, a couple of these funds on a regular basis. So something that, you know, it's good to see, because this is where there's, we have seen fraudness over the years in this area, and there is a lot of cash that's running through these funds, so it is a good idea to be doing this on a, on a regular basis.
And I just wanted to say thank you to Janice and her entire staff. It seems like with all the complexity with school accounting growing and growing each year, there's more and more testing we have to do, and Janice was extremely gracious throughout the whole process, so we really appreciate that.
Any questions or comments from board members? And yeah, Janice had mentioned that there was randomly selected a couple of clubs or sports or whatever. Which ones were they?
We did one from Heritage. I don't recall the name of the actual fund, but it was the fund that they used to go see the Toledo Mud Hens game. And then we also took. And then we also took a look at the Hive account and the Auto Shop account.
Okay, okay. And I'd like to thank Plant Moran for coming in this evening. Certainly we'll have to take it up as a board, you know, in those club accounts where there's that, that sum of money, whether we want to pursue that further in the future or not, but thank you very much. Anything else from board members?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have, we have a motion, we have a second, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the annual resolution to impose a summer tax levy to collect all annual school property taxes, including debt service. Motion on that. Trustee Zimmer? Second. Trustee.
Heinic.
Okay, do you have any comment?
No real comment, this is consistent with what we've done in the past.
We've been collecting, yeah, summer taxes since 1994. This is really no change, it's just an annual resolution that we have to pass.
Okay, any questions from board members? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to reappoint Lisa Flynn and Donald File to the Saline District Library Board, serving a two-year term ending November 30th, 2015. We have trustee Delhague and a second. Trustee Freeze. Any discussion?
I'll just touch base, both are longtime serving. Don File has been on since the early 90s and Lisa Flynn has been on since 2005 and both have asked to be reappointed, so applaud their efforts.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Discussion items. Anything from trustee Zimmer on board policy? Just real quickly, Policy Committee met on the 23rd and two topics with concussions in athletic activities.
You know, he was down at the bed for a game last Friday. You saw firsthand the concussion happens and so it's real stuff and so we're looking at how to best address it. The changes in state law, the question is how do we do the education? How do we do the education? Who all is involved? Following on on the 20th for a second review of that. Not sure where it can go at this point in time. Second was dealing with goal objectives because of the change of state law, need to put some of the things that were previously in the particular bargaining agreement now within the policies and where to put them and how to put them in there.
Okay, any, any questions for trustee Zimmer? Finance committee update, trustee Heinic.
We actually have met twice last month. We went through a little bit of last year's numbers that improved a little since the audit. We did have a preview of the audit, so we looked at that. We looked at this year's numbers, which are slightly, I don't want to say worse, they're just down a little than the initial budget that we presented in June. Couple little things that stood out, they purchased timekeeping software so they don't have to do manual time cards anymore.
Tracy Time Clock.
Tracy Time Clock, it sounds like a fun piece of software, but it does its job, frees up people to do other work. And we're also up, purchased the visitor software for buildings for, got to present your driver's license and issues you a little badge. I think they're trialing that in.
Pleasantly.
So, those are some, I don't want to say significant things, but a couple of items that contributed to this year's budget variances. And we are, I've had some discussions about five-year budgets and the things that make up that, so I think we'll have a full session on that in a couple of weeks.
Okay. Meeting on the 19th as well.
Yeah, we're meeting next week to prep.
The chair will entertain a motion to authorize items A through E as part of the consent agenda. So move. Chief, support and trustee Heinic. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Items scheduled on the next agenda, which will be a work session?
It will be a work session, so there's one item and it will be the five-year budget plan. We'll be talking about it on Tuesday. That is the Tuesday of the Thanksgiving week, so just be aware of that as you're planning.
This is a second opportunity for public comment where members of the audience can address the board for up to three minutes. Are there any members of the audience who wish to address the board this evening? Okay. And the chair will entertain a motion to enter into closed session at this point. Trustee Delhague with a second from Secretary Carter. This will be a roll call vote. Trustee Freeze.
Aye.
Trustee Zimmer.
Aye.
Vice President Heft.
Yes.
President Holden, aye. Secretary Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Delhague.
Aye.
Trustee Heinic.
Aye.
Okay. We will come back at, it says we'll take a quick five-minute break.